Please stand for the Pledge Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Jeremy, you're ready? Okay. Sorry, I should have asked you before. Sandy, roll call.
Councilmember Stacy Green.
Present.
Councilmember Kim Green.
Here.
Councilmember Bob Hall.
Here.
Councilmember Ken Calvini.
Here.
Mayor Susan Tavallaro.
Here. Thank you very much. Item number three is non-agenda public comment. So no action may be taken by the council on matters not on this agenda, but the council has the discretion to determine the appropriate disposition of the matter presented. Three members of the council must agree to add a matter to, the matter to a future agenda pursuant to open meeting laws, no discussion or action other than a referral should be taken by the council on any issue brought forth. So is there anybody here that would like to speak on something that's not on the agenda?
That's on the, I think you better explain the consent agenda.
No, no, not yet. Okay. Councilmember announcements. Ken.
I don't have a lot to say. I was to a call your interpretive and information center meeting because I'm supposed to go there. We didn't have much to discuss. We didn't have a quorum. I'd also like to know that everybody, there's about 60-some people doing our senior lunch right now on average, so that's coming back. We're also doing bingo afterwards and exercise before, so it's been conjunction with the Weed Community Center. That's it.
That's it?
I'm done.
Kim?
So I don't have anything, but I did get a message from the chamber wanting me to invite people to the trunk or treat, which is Saturday, the 30th, down on Main Street. If you would like to participate by buying candy and donating it to the chamber, that would help. I guess last year we went through like $800 worth of candy and we ran out and we brought our own candy. So they said they're buying like $1,000 worth and we have like 30 cars right now, from what I understand, so it should be successful.
Is that it? Bob? Stacy?
Yes ma'am. Just being as that we attended, we being me and myself, I was eager and glad to meet with both principals of certain schools that are being addressed certain topics. And I appreciate that openness that we have to get that information, so I'm very proud of that. I want to let the community know. That was good to have to attend some of those meetings together. Also, on the homeless committee, we had two presentations on the 6th. And I was eager to see, we have some presentation, I'm not going to go over the details, but they talked about the origins and the interest of what's happening in here, in our county. As you know, they're trying to build some locations that will effectively house people. And a couple of presentations, we're talking about the youth and the beginnings of what the youth did and where their beginnings come from, and it was very interesting. And as you know, the bottom line, same thing for two, three years, it's finance. Where's the money come from to support these activities? They're still looking for that. And as you know, you probably see on the news, different projects with small housing and things that we have that can hold them. It costs money. We have to look at, we don't have to look at that, but we must be aware of that. Because it has to be addressed some type of way that we will always continue to have homelessness. And when it starts in the youth, in the high schools and the elementary schools, they have certain parameters, as the teachers and instructors know, that they have to do certain things because of being youth and their privacy. So it was eager to know, and I'll probably forward the presentation to our city manager so he can take a look at that, but it was good content, so that was my content of the last few weeks.
Okay. Thank you. I did a few things. I went to the Cal Cities Conference in Sacramento a couple of weekends ago. They have lots of different breakout sessions. So I obviously went to a couple of them on cannabis. And it was very interesting, when it was, one of the cannabis meetings, when everybody was done, lots of cities said, "We have allowed cannabis grows in our cities, but the problem that we have is the illegal grows outside of the cities." And after that comment, there was about 10 of us gathered together with the same problems saying, "Where, how do we get this fixed?" There was lots of different things in that one. Last night, Stacy and I attended the League of Local Agency, the LOLA meeting, and that is a meeting that is all of the counties in Siskiyou County, or city, the cities in Siskiyou County and the city councils. So we get to know what's going on in everybody's cities and what's, you know, getting built, what's happening.
Can I add to that? One thing, as you know, I was in creative arts undergrad. We met a person from Redding, Suzanne, last name is different, I can say it, but she's the rep from Chastity County that's now working in our area. That possible films can be done, as you know, Kevin Spacey was in the Dunsmere, Mount Chastity area, and he had certain privacy provisions that people were, but we're all excited. I was excited to see in the newspaper, but some people were saying like, "He wants to be private," and they were looking at other activities, so they want to do more films in our area. So maybe if somebody has some ideas, let us know, but they, I, we all want to be on camera, not all of us, but you know. But it brings money to the community.
It does bring a lot of money to the local economy. And I'm also on the local transportation committee, and we might be receiving money for a certain parking lot in our town that the city owns to get repaved. Hopefully, hopefully that goes through in a timely manner. It might be the sun's, yep. Yep. So that was a good thing.
Which really isn't the sun.
It's a city. It's a city parking lot. The city owns that one.
It is so identified.
Yes. And that's it for me. So we will move on to item number five, a presentation. Is Quentin on there?
There he is.
Hi Quentin. We can't hear him. Jeremy? Can you hear us? He said, "Yes ma'am."
Probably your mute button.
Now? Can you hear us now?
We can't hear him.
We still can't hear you. Hang on. Jeremy's working on it.
Clinton, it's your mute button. Doesn't say. See, audio video over there is off.
Jeremy said he knew that.
I keep telling you, you are, sorry.
Jeremy wants you to disconnect, reconnect.
Who's that?
That's me. Delayed.
Uh oh, there's a connection.
Hello? Can you hear us? Oh yay! Yay, got it!
Technology.
All right.
You're out of time.
Jeremy, could you assign me to host, please?
He wants to host.
But while we're waiting, I'll just go ahead and sort of give a rundown of what I'm here to speak about today, and, and please do not hesitate to stop me if you have any questions. As, as I have been at council before, and many of you are aware, we did apply and get awarded a $250,000 CDBG grant from California Department of Housing and Community Development to open a micro enterprise assistance program in the city of Weed. Now that the program is open, I'm sort of going to discuss my role in this program, the city's role in this program, and sort of how we're going to work moving forward. So principally, my role as the program administrator is to sort of act in the fiduciary responsibility of this city. We can think of this, this grant fund as an investment fund. And what we're looking at doing is targeting micro enterprises, which are businesses with five or fewer employees, whose owners or whose employees are principally low to moderate income. And what we're looking for is, we're looking for some of those businesses that are just on the cusp. Either a little nudge can push them over the edge, and, and we're looking for it, you know, an increase in sales, an increase in jobs. We want to see this program as another incentive to do business in Weed and help folks start small businesses in Weed. So I'm going to go ahead and share our website and sort of how folks can access the program and what everything looks like. So this is our main website, right here, siscucounty.org. My organization, Siskiyou Economic Development, based in Waireka for anyone who doesn't know us. We also host a Small Business Development Center, so we work very closely with small businesses all around Siskiyou County, including many located in Weed. So if you go to our Small Business tab, you'll see here, Micro Enterprise for Weed and Dance Fair. So the city of Dunsmere actually applied for and was awarded and is doing the exact same program as y'all. We are achieving economies of scale by, you know, they follow very similar guidelines, the applications are very similar, a lot of the reporting forms and templates are very similar. But they do have separate funds, but I did combine them on the website. So here on this website, it sort of breaks down, you know, what a micro enterprise is, who's eligible, and yet startups are eligible. The way this program works is, is once an applicant is qualified, they are eligible for up to three years of assistance. So, you know, some businesses might be ready for a capital infusion right from the get-go that say someone put $50,000 or $60,000 into food truck, but they could really use, you know, 10 grand or so for some equipment, for some staffing, for some inventory, things like that. That's like really how we want to look at this program, is as a way to catalyze, to add as a force multiplier for these businesses. And they can be funded incrementally. Let's say startup business is just going to go for a really micro grant at the beginning. They're going to start off with a few thousand and see how it goes, and maybe the next year, after some increase of sales, they, and, you know, they identify some new projects, like, hey, if I get this new piece of equipment, I could double my production, or, you know, things like that. We could then do another grant at that time. And the way we did structure this program is as grants. We aren't doing forgivable loans, we aren't doing low-interest loans. I think one of the consequences of COVID-19 and the pandemic is a lot of businesses right now just can't really tolerate a lot of debt. And we do have to look at identifying ways to stimulate the economy, and especially as a lot of people, as we're seeing every day, are leaving the workforce. A lot of reasons they're leaving the workforce is because they don't feel the level of satisfaction working for someone else, and many of them are actually starting small businesses. And so if this could be a way to maybe help, help folks employ themselves through entrepreneurship, it'd be a fantastic utilization of the program. So through this website, we, you know, describe what funds can be used for, and they can be really flexible. I mean, let's say, let's say you're a young, single mother, and you've got the dream to open a business, but you can't be at the business all the time if you don't have someone watching your kids. And this program can even be as flexible to help with childcare costs. So, you know, so, so women who otherwise would have been priced out or not able to participate in this part of the economy now have that ability. It can be used for furniture, for furnishings improvements, you know, even a new paint job on the front of your building can really do a lot for increasing foot traffic to your business, just giving it a new, fresh feel. The way we can do it is just about everything other than, you know, hard construction, big capital, you know, giant things. If, if folks are, you know, if they're able to get qualified for large capital loans through credit lenders, we're going to encourage them to go there. This program really is intended for the people who may not traditionally qualify for commercial lending, or who may have fallen through the cracks before. So this is a way to kind of achieve more equitable incomes and how we assist businesses in Siskiyou County. And so we tell folks everything they need, and unfortunately, there is a good bit of paperwork that goes through this, but luckily, there's staff at Siskiyou Economic Development that can assist folks with their applications. And because we are local, we are here in Siskiyou, that say something goes wrong, or someone doesn't have their taxes filed yet, well, we're just right up the road, you know, we can, we can work people. We understand that things happen. Not everyone always has everything tied up, ready to go, but luckily, they're not dealing with someone in a call center, you know, in Kansas City, they're dealing with someone here in Waireka. So we're, we're willing to work folks to help them complete the application, to get their certifications needed, to help them plan how to use funds. That's really the most paramount part, is we want to make sure these funds are guided and directed towards ways that are going to increase positive business outcomes. So the application itself is, is right here, so if we, if we open it up, this is what it looks like from the applicant's point of view. I'm going to move down a little bit, just so I can see my tabs. But, so they'll, they'll access it through here, and we'll walk them step by step through each thing. They can save their application, and what I really like about this web form is it's HIPAA level protection. So what HIPAA means is it's a, it's the health privacy law designed to protect personal information. So because folks are going to have to be uploading their tax returns and other personal information, I want to make sure that we do our best to protect that. And so everything that is uploaded through this program is secure, it is encrypted, and it stays within a localized system. So folks can, can feel a little better about that. If they do want to give us stuff in person in office, and, and they don't want to go that route, that's okay. We can always accept documentation in person as well. I'll show you the app, just because I have to fill in the information to go through, I'll just show you what it looks like from the backend. So this is all the different content that we ask for, and what's nice about this is it auto-populates into a reporting and tracking matrix, so we can kind of see all the different demographics of everyone who's applied, where they're located, what their business is, what they're aiming to do. So everything that folks need to be able to participate and be qualified in this program can be accessed through this web form. Also on this website are a couple different forms they'll have to be able to look at and download. We have frequently asked questions that are pretty extensive. There, there are quite a few long pages, so if, if your question isn't answered in this, you can always contact us at the office. Additionally, we have a statement of assurances that people can download, initial and sign. This is basically a legal agreement that states everything they're going to use grant funds for is an eligible use. If they do not use it for, if they did use it for ineligible uses, it would require payback. So everything from their W-9, we make it, so this is a one-stop shop for everything. With that, do any of you have any questions about how the program works, any of the timelines, budget figures? I'm, I'm able to answer any questions.
Quentin, I do. This is Stacy Green. How are you? Can you hear me?
I'm fantastic. How are you, Councilmember Green?
Just, it was documented, it says low to moderate income. There was no dollar amount of there. Is there one that you could communicate now that people would know from just hearing the presentation, what's low to moderate income?
Yeah, so actually, we do, we do have a link to the income limits, and I will pull it up. I have the tab open right here. So for Siskiyou County, for an individual, a single person, that 80% limit is going to be $39,000 a year. Let's say you're married and you have two kids, that number's going to bump up to $55,750. So you'll notice there's also extremely low, low, while we do monitor and report these metrics to the state of California for reporting purposes, as long as you're below that 80% limit, you're qualified. So we don't have like specific status sides for very low income or low income, it's just as long as you meet that low to moderate income nexus. And this can be met in, in two ways. If the owner is low to moderate income, or if 51% or more of their employees are low to moderate income.
Now, is that the same as documented annual income? Would that be the same numbers?
Yeah, so what we're going to be doing is we're going to be using what's called the AGI method, which means we look at folks' tax return, their most recent tax return. And once someone is income-qualified, they are eligible for up to three years. So a common question I get, "Well Quentin, you know, what if I participate in this program, and I do really good in this year, and I get pushed over the income limit?" Well, first of all, that's something I want to see. Second of all, no, you can still participate in the program because you have three years of eligibility.
And if something changes during the year with their income, you can be notified or assist with the change, whatever that means to the application, right?
Correct.
Okay, thank you for that. That's all. I don't have any more questions.
Anybody else?
I have one. Quentin, if somebody goes online and, and fills out their application, any idea how long they expect for somebody to get back to them regarding that?
Yeah, so I, I check these every day. I can tell you that the one thing that folks, because this is very similar to our existing COVID relief grant, it's also CDBG funded, I'd say nine times out of 10, the thing that delays it is, and unfortunately, this is a requirement that is passed down to us from the state, is that the business has to be registered on SAM.gov. SAM.gov is the system for award management, and it's the way federal government checks whether entities are debarred. And you can be debarred for numerous reasons, such as financial fraud, if you're behind on childcare payments. So it's one of the ways to, to check, to make sure that people are eligible to receive funding. So I oftentimes will look at their application and be able to do, I'll do a cursory review and just see if it's complete, if they have everything. If they're missing something, I'll usually reach out that day. Underwriting the application generally takes a couple days, because, because that's when we really dig into their finances, and we want to, you know, determine what's their cash flow looking like, what, what kind of risk is associated based on that cash flow. We, we look at what's called a debt service coverage ratio, which sort of indicates how much risk is associated with a loan. So even though we are issuing grants and we aren't requiring repayment, we want to make sure that these projects and these businesses are feasible, and that they would be able to continue to exist and, and function without CDBG funds.
Quentin, I have a follow-up question. What if mysterious donor wants to give a donation to a business? Is that, how is that handled? Is that same as just expense, not expenses, but income? Like a person wants to get a check?
Yeah, so if it's not, if it's not like a family gift, and I would, I would always encourage them to reach out to a CPA or a tax attorney on, on something like this. I can't issue legal advice. But generally, gifts over a certain amount will be treated as, as gross revenue. So let's say if it was an investment, like an angel investment in the business, that would generally have to come with some sort of 1099 miscellaneous from that, from the person who provided that funds, and that will get treated as gross revenue.
Okay, so everybody's listening.
CDBG funds will...
So it's possible, everybody listening, good. Thank you for that.
Good. Did anybody else in, we have, we have a lot of Weed people here. Did anybody else have any questions for him about this?
I have a question.
Microphone. Jeremy likes, Jeremy likes people on the microphone.
So I have a question. I recently started the application process to become a 501(c)(3), me and a group of our friends that do animal rescue. Are startup nonprofits eligible for grants through the county?
Unfortunately, not for these programs. The way the US Department of Housing and Urban Development defines micro enterprise, it's as a for-profit business with five or fewer employees, and that's a very hard definition with no wiggle room. There are alternative funding sources through the same grant program that if the county were to pursue some sort of community development grant, for example, that can fund nonprofits, either directly through activity, based on what you do, but this, this program is designed specifically for, for for-profits.
Awesome, thank you. I'm sorry if it was already covered. We walked in a bit late, so.
No, I don't think it was. That was a great question.
Great question, yeah.
Okay. I think that's it, Quentin.
Thank you, sir.
I think we're good. Thank you.
All right, and if anyone has questions, they can call Siskiyou Economic Development, or my email is quinton, Q-U-I-N-T-I-N, at siscucounty.org. Please don't hesitate to reach out. Tell your friends far and few. I know Bill Choi at Siskiyou Daily News is supposed to be running a story soon on this, so stay, stay tuned for that, but this will be here for a few years, so we, we want to make sure that folks understand they don't have to, they're not under the gun, you know, to, to get out there, to get it done.
And Quentin, just the spelling of the name on our, our information, it says Q-U-I-N-T-E-N, but it's T-I-N, right? Okay, so just...
Yeah, I have, I have plaques from Waireka High School where I graduated with my name spelled wrong.
That's why. We, Waireka High School, not Weed. Thank you for the clarification.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks, Quentin.
All right, we will move on to item six, the Consent Agenda. Do any councilmembers want to remove anything from the Consent Agenda?
I will be brave. I would want to remove item A. Excuse me. I want to be brave. I'll remove item A. I believe if there's anybody that wants to discuss, or at least present an opinion on this item, it should be done.
Okay.
A second.
Moved and...
Don't we need three?
No, we don't need two. Okay.
Thought we needed three.
No. Okay. Now we can approve the Consent Agenda?
As amended.
Yes, please, you...
As amended.
Approve the Consent Agenda as amended, and then the first item after the Consent Agenda will be...
Okay, yes.
Has, item A has been removed from the...
Item A has been removed from the Consent Agenda.
I have comments to make.
Oh, you don't want us to remove it?
No, that, sorry, to clarify, the removal from the Consent Agenda means it is moved to after the Consent Agenda.
Great, okay, I just wanted to make sure I understood properly.
It will be treated as a separate item on the...
Got it, got it.
Yeah, it will be taken off, and you can make comments. All right.
Then can I make a motion to approve the Consent Agenda as amended?
You can, yep.
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the Consent Agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we will move on to items removed from the Consent Agenda on number seven, so we have the feral cats. Is there anybody that would like to make a comment? You will have... I could see that. You can come to the podium. We need your name and address, and you get three minutes.
You're not doing cards?
No, there not be cards.
Good evening. My name is Patricia Carreras. I am a member of the Feral Cat Caretaker Coalition.
I need your name and address, please.
My address is 802 Carmen Drive in Mount Shasta.
You're from Mount Shasta?
I am.
Okay, thank you.
So first of all, I want to say good evening. I would also like to say that as members of the human race, we, our, our baseline is that of compassion and respect for life, and I believe that's part of the baseline here in this room, this community. The feral cats, there's been a lot of studies done on the feral cats. Feral cats, when they are taken care of, provide very little danger to a community, and in fact, they socialize into communities fairly quickly, the research has shown. When they have feeding stations, they are easy to take care of, to get medical care for, to trap, to get them spayed and neutered, to keep the population... to trap, to get them spayed and neutered, to keep the population from growing. But they also have really larger roles they play in our society. In the 1200s, Pope Gregory IV went on a mission to eradicate cats. And not long thereafter, the bubonic plague started and spread widely. And there are many learned opinions who say that it was spread more quickly because there were no cats to take out rats who spread that plague. You guys mentioned the possibility of movie companies coming. I worked in Hollywood for over 20 years. There's a story from the 1930s of James Cagney, who was shooting on the Warner Brothers lot. And his favorite hat, his wool hat, was eaten by rats. And so he walked into Jack Warner's office with his hat and said, "Everybody knows cats kill rats. And I'm not coming back on this lot until there's some meowing going on here." There are a lot of feral cats in LA living on studio lots. And there are groups that take care of them. And in the meantime, and in addition, those cats give a lot back to the community, give a lot back to the studio. The production companies, and I worked in one of the production companies, the cats bring a sense of stability and relief in a stressful job. Wherever there's food, they're willing to come out and hang out. And they get the food from craft service, and they keep rats at bay. They keep rats away from the food. And they form friendships with the people in these companies who take care of them. They really do a lot of good. And I guess the last thing I really want to say is as compassionate, loving people with the sanctity, recognizing sanctity for life, do we really want our children seeing starving cats dying on the sidewalks of our streets? I think the harm that it does is much, much worse than whatever the potential fear is. And I say fear because it's mostly fear because education is really important. And our group would be very willing to help with education and implementation at no cost to the city of Weed.
Thank you, Patricia. Anybody else?
Hi, good evening, Honorable Mayor Tavallaro and council members. I am Nicole Dwork.
Okay.
From Dunsmere.
From Dunsmere.
Do you need my address?
Yes, please.
5630 Dunsmere Avenue.
Okay.
Okay, so I represent a nonprofit cat rescue organization. I know you know me from the last meeting. Our organization is called Saving Shasta Cats. We work widely in Weed, trapping feral cats and feeding the colonies here and doing TNR, getting the cats fixed. And I wanted to give you an update since the last meeting, September 26th. Until current, we have fixed 40 cats here in Weed. And we have more scheduled for the rest of this month. I was wanting to know if you received the letter that I forwarded to you on Friday to the council members?
Yes, they all got it via email.
Okay.
Yes.
So my plea to you is to change or amend the language of the ordinance to allow rescue organizations such as myself and the Siskiyou Humane Society and private citizens to conduct TNR on not only private property with the permission of private property owners, but on public property. So we can be more effective in this venture to control the feral cat population. So that's my main request tonight. When I spoke with Tim Rundle last week, he mentioned that organizations could request by special permission to feed possibly on public property to do TNR.
Well, when you say, I'll let you, I'm sorry.
So I'd like you to clarify, yes, okay, thank you. So I wanted some clarification on that. And I wanted to know if we could actually have that included in the language of the ordinance so we can be assured that this will actually happen. So that's one request I have. Let's see, oh, I had wanted to ask about the committee. We had discussed the committee at last meeting and had not heard from any of the council members about it. And I had requested of Sandy to be able to give a presentation tonight, and was denied that opportunity. So I'm just wanting to continue this dialogue so we can solve this problem in a compassionate and effective way. I'm, my organization is offering funding and thousands of hours of time to this. So I would like to ask that you would please work with me on this. So I would like to see the committee go forward. So those are my main questions. I know I'm running out of time here, so I'm probably not going to be able to finish my last point. But I did want to let you know that starving animals, I think if you actually saw it and saw what it looked like, I think you would change your mind about this decision that you had made about putting forth an ordinance to starve cats. It is beyond cruel. And I have pictures for you and videos. And I do think it would change you. I think all of you are compassionate people here. So I'm pleading with you to use your heart and your head.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Anybody else?
Hello, my name is Andrea Clausen, and my address is 800 Black Butte Road in Weed. I am a wildlife conservationist. I have a PhD in conservation biology and have 20 years, more than 20 years of experience as a wildlife biologist with a focus on protection of endangered and threatened bird species. I came to this area about 15 years ago as a lover of nature and a lover of wildlife. And I think many people who have come to this area from elsewhere and people who are from this area that have stayed really appreciate the spectacular natural environment that we're in and really get a lot out of wildlife viewing. I'm a deep-down, lifelong animal lover. And I'm here to speak for all of the wildlife that cats kill. Some colleagues of mine from the Smithsonian Institute and US Fish and Wildlife Service did an extensive study of cat predation in the mainland US, looking at other wildlife that cats kill. And they found that feral cats kill between 1.5 and 3.7 billion birds each year in the US. They also kill between 6.9 and 20.7 billion small mammals. They also kill between 260 and 822 million reptiles and between 95 and 299 million amphibians. That equates to between 8.7 and 25.5 billion animals killed by feral cats in this country every year. One single feral cat, on average, kills between 10 and 510 kills per week, which means an average of 13,520 animals killed for one single cat in a year. That means that in its lifetime, an average life expectancy of seven years, one feral cat in its lifetime kills 81,120 other animals. So as an animal lover, why would you support one single feral cat versus 81,120 other wildlife animals? Birds, mammals, reptiles, amphibians, that all have a right to survive, that are wildlife, natural wildlife, and not non-native invasive species like feral cats? So I would urge you to please pass that ordinance as a first step. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Liz Winterhawk, 5720 Antelope Court in Weed.
Antelope Court, is that like Chastina?
Chastina.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. And thank you for the opportunity to address the council. So it's interesting to me, I love statistics. It's interesting to me that by simply buying a few cans of friskies, we can bypass the whole recently reported difficulty almost entirely. You know, it's also shown statistically that regularly fed cats get neutered. They're easy to catch, they're easy to feed, they're manageable, and the population depletes in this program. Those cats are not out eating millions of this and millions of that. I'd like to see the statistic on what any one of us eats in a month. You know, how much killing are we responsible for? How many cows, how many eggs, how many, whatever, plants, you know? Every single one of us falls into exactly what those cats do. But we range further, we order on Amazon, we eat out. You know, we're much more responsible for death and dying than any feral cat. And it's, I work in animal communication now for 30 years. So it's my job to observe all of these kinds of programs. And I got to say that Shasta Cats is right up there with any national or international program in terms of their ethics, in terms of their showing up. You know, they never let you down. I've snowshoed paths for them to feed. You all might know Ruth Schlossberg, who was probably here at the last meeting, half my size, out to her hips in the snow to feed cats on the lot that she bought in Mount Shasta so that she would have a right to feed those cats. And there were many, many cats there for many years. Now it's down to a handful. And that's because of trap, neuter, release, feed the cats, vaccinate them, get the ones that are young enough or potentially able to be adopted, run them through the Humane Society, run them through private fosters. Many of us in this room have what were feral cats. You know, if you've gone to the Humane Society, you might have adopted a feral cat. So it's not the fault of the cats that are out there, it's the fault of the uneducated people. And it's our fault too, if we don't allow something that's already in place, being funded, not asking a nickel for the city, not asking you to do anything, like get up and go out in the snow, or the snow in Mount Shasta, wherever, to feed the ferals. You know, you don't have to do anything, it's all being done for you, it's handed to you on a silver platter. And by golly, those statistics are going down. And you're going to have problems if you don't keep up this program. So I ask you to please at least revise some of the permissions. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Oh, there's two of you.
Hi, my name is Ashley Bissonette. I live at 55 North Weed Boulevard in one of Cliff's nice little apartments. I actually ended up in this county for multiple reasons. One, I have a child that lives here with his father. Two, my most recent relationship left me and my children sitting on the side of the road. However, I've been involved in animal rescue and rehab for much longer than I'd like to admit, almost since I left home, which I did at 12. I have not seen an area as bad as Siskiyou County for ferals and strays since I was a street kid in the 90s. Starving animals, not allowing animals to get medical care isn't going to help with the feral population. Strong trap-neuter-release ordinances where people are allowed to come in, trap, neuter, release, and feed stops the spread of diseases, stops them procreating over and over and over again. Starving them's not going to take care of the situation. Keeping them from getting medical care is not going to keep them from breeding. They're going to get into people's garbages, they're going to continue to procreate. The goal of trap-neuter-release is to bring down our populations so that we have a manageable group that isn't continuously breeding and causing more of a problem. When you start feeding feral cats and start doing TNR, the number of animals that they eat in the wild drops drastically, drastically. When animals are fed and taken care of, their natural instinct to go and hunt for food isn't nearly as strong. And to deny animals that are already in our community basic access to food and healthcare, to me is akin to me refusing to bring my child on chemo to his next appointment at Stanford. Denying beings, whether they're human or not, that are less capable of themselves, basic rights as an animal, as a living being, is one of the coolest things I think that humanity can do as a whole. To me, I don't find that any different than walking by a starving kid on the street and not offering to buy him food. I have taken in, just me and my family, 33 animals this year. I came to this county with no animals almost exactly a year ago. I have a 97% success rate with animals that I take in, some of them near death. Saving Shasta Cats over the last year has helped me tons and tons and tons. I have saved the lives of at least, 13 of them probably would have been okay. But the other 20 animals that came into my care would have died had it not been for me and other organizations that are in our county. And I'd like you guys to take that into consideration.
Thank you very much. Hi.
Hi. Bruce Shoemaker, 800 Black Butte Road in Weed. I would like to speak in favor of the ordinance that you're hopefully going to vote on tonight. It's overdue, I would like, my only criticism is it doesn't go far enough, but it's definitely a good step in the right direction. I've seen from living on, in the city but on the outskirts and witnessing feeding stations set up by Saving Shasta Cats or their allies, the negative effects that has, they do not, in the South Weed area, they not only attract cats, but they attract other wildlife. They've become like magnets for coyote feeding. And I personally think, you know, the research I've done is trap-neuter-release, it's a nice concept, but it doesn't work. And what we actually need is to trap, euthanize, and dispose of feral cats. I know that sounds harsh, but it would be better and more humane for a lot of those feral cats to get released back into a difficult situation where they don't have enough food to eat. Despite these feeding stations, they're still predating on wildlife. I see the dead birds in South Weed that have been attacked by cats right by the grocery outlet. They had a big feeding station behind the grocery outlet, behind the McDonald's. And it's been, it would be, and then the coyotes just come in and terrorize and kill these cats. It would be a lot better for them. I know it's a very emotional issue for a lot of people that care about cats, I understand that. I'm an animal lover myself. But it creates a lot of negatives. These feeding stations also attract rats and other skunks, other creatures that you don't necessarily want in or next to your yard. I know it's nice that it's on private property, but you're still, if that's right next to your place, you're still going to be dealing with lots of feral cats, their noise, their problems, and coming into your yard, killing the birds that you might love in your yard. It's basically a really negative thing. And I understand the motivation that people love cats, but it's a naive and unrealistic strategy. And TNR has just been shown all over the country not to actually work. And that's why, TNR is not new. But yet, the number of cats still keeps, feral cats just keeps going up and up and up despite all of these supposed humanitarian efforts. So anyway, I appreciate your willingness to overcome the emotion of a vocal minority and pass this important ordinance for the people of our community and the wildlife of our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Bruce. Anybody else? Come on up.
Hi, my name is Sydney Scott. My address is 639 Paul's Place, Mount Shasta. My grandma's from Weed-
I'm sorry, what was it?
639 Paul's Place, Mount Shasta County.
In Mount Shasta?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you.
So my grandma has lived here her entire life, and a lot of you may personally know me, actually. I have been coming up here since I was born. I've seen the cat problem- I've seen the cat problem firsthand, and actually within the last three weeks, I've caught five cats, I've gotten them their shots, and I've gotten them rehomed because that is exactly what needs to be happening here. Along with the last gentleman who just spoke, I just wanted to say, we do live in a very rural area, which means you have to expect animals anyways. This isn't being brought on by the cats necessarily. Um, I'm completely against this ordinance, at least how it's written right now. There are good parts to it, but I do feel that the trap, spay and neuter and release is really important. I personally, my aunt lives over on Stringtown, and I have been trying to catch the mama cat because it's on her personal property, and I'm fully willing to pay for the spay and neuter that needs to happen, because after that happens, then there's no more kittens for me to catch, and then there's no more cats to feed. It does take care of a lot of the rats and everything that is going on around here, because as we know, we also do have a partial trash problem with underneath buildings, in between buildings, which attracts the cats. That could also be another thing that could be taken care of to diminish a lot of the cats that so many people have problems with. I don't have that much to say, but I really hope that you do hear me out on this with the whole catch, spay and neuter and release, because I do feel that it could really help. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
My name is Kim Lattis. My address is 444 Shastecove, Weed, California. I'm also the director of the Siskiyou Humane Society.
Where's, where's Shastecove?
In Weed, California, off of Old Stage. Siskiyou Humane Society has been working with the City of Weed and their Animal Control Community Service Officers for over 15 years in relation to domestic and feral animals. Siskiyou Humane Society has been available to assist and provide services in the following capacity. We've accepted stray, unclaimed dogs into our adoptions program that were impounded by Weed officers for running at large. We've provided training to the officers on temperament and behavior testing for dogs for adoptability. We've assisted with capture and euthanasia of dangerous dogs, assistance and intake of animals involved in legal cases such as hoarding, theft, abuse. We have taken the calls related to all cat complaints and issues referred to us by the City of Weed, because the City of Weed does not provide services related to cats. Since 2010, Siskiyou Humane Society has accepted 792 cats and kittens from the City of Weed jurisdiction. Since 2015, from the City of Weed jurisdiction, we have accepted 160 stray cats over the age of eight weeks, 175 owner surrenders. We've provided spay and neuter assistance and other services to 269 public-owned cats and kittens, and accepted 139 stray feral kittens under the age of eight weeks. We have spayed and neutered 74 feral cats and kittens this year to date from the Weed jurisdiction. The amount of kittens that could've been born from all these cats would be in the thousands. I can guarantee your feeding ban is going to create an influx in the breeding and reproduction of cats in the City of Weed, which will increase the death and killing of the wild animals referred to from your previous speaker. The offspring of the cats that are scavenging for food, malnourished and exposed to more illness and disease are going to be of the same. Sick, malnourished, inbred kittens will consume our resources rapidly, not allowing us to help as many as we have in the past. I offered assistance and asked that you contact Siskiyou Humane Society last month, but no one has called from the council or the City of Weed to ask questions or to find humane ways to resolve the problems. Last month, your chief of police gave a 30-minute presentation which contained information from the only animal welfare organization in this country that is against the tar programs. Your reply to me was, "Because he works for you." Do you not work for us, the community? Why am I an employee of 53-year-old, local-established animal welfare organization with over 25 years of animal welfare experience who understands and has empathy for both sides of this situation, is not allowed to give a professional educational presentation to your community, which last month I was told I would be able to do? I can only assume at this point that you are making this decision based on that information given in the PowerPoint presentation. You failed to include in your presentation, PETA suggests that the people are morally obligated to euthanize feral cats. I'm asking you to table the voting on this ordinance and find a way to work with us to resolve this problem that your, members of your community created. This ordinance will put up barriers and obstacles that will delay the efforts of those trying to help humanely reduce community cat population. Those of us that have been helping for a very long time, and I feel very disrespected that I and our organization wasn't allowed to give a proper presentation.
Thank you very much. Anybody else?
Ms. Mayor, I'd like to ask, please respect the allotted time regardless of your comments.
So far, so foremost, everybody's been, everybody's been good.
That's just a general statement for anyone who wants to speak.
And I appreciate that. Everybody's been very good about the three minutes. Hi, name and address?
My name is Dayone Von Heine. I live in five, in Dunsmere, 5918 Mountain Avenue.
You live in Dunsmere?
Yes.
Thank you.
And I am part of Saving Shasta Cats. I have a couple of questions of the people that presented the, against, or for the ordinance. What are you going to do about people who own animals but don't bring them inside their homes? They allow them to stay outside, and many times they wander around to other people's yards, but they belong to someone. What are you going to do about those people and their animals? And what are you going to do about the people who move away and abandon their animals? Because that's against the California laws. Abandonment is a misdemeanor, and those people are never prosecuted, they're never, nobody ever talks about that, and that's what we deal with. Most of the animals that we have and take care of have been abandoned, and they join these feral colonies, you call them feral, but they're community cats. They join these colonies because they've been left to fend for themselves, and we are there trying to help humiliate that whole problem. We take care of a lot of abandoned animals, and we find homes for many, many animals. I am one of the fosters, I'm fostering many animals right now, and we find homes for them. We get them spayed, neutered, as everyone has said. So what are you guys gonna do about those people and that problem about people abandoning their animals? Because you're not gonna get rid of that problem if you don't do anything about it, and it's gonna continue. And if you kill the animals, like that gentleman said, it's only gonna create, create what they call a vacuum effect. So you kill all these animals, more are going to come right back in, and you're, it's gonna be a never-ending problem. So I would like to know what you guys propose to do about those people that abandon, the people that own animals but don't bring them in their houses? They, they're outside cats all the time. They're gonna wander around, are they gonna get caught? You're gonna kill someone's personal pet? It's not right. It's cruel, it's inhumane, and I'm upset at people who even think that way. It's very, very disappointing to hear people say these awful things. So that's my thoughts.
Thank you. Anybody else on this subject? Do we have any need to discuss?
Do we need any clarification from what was received about the wording of the ordinance?
That's up to, if the council feels that clarification is needed, then I'm available for questions, but if not...
I would suggest, Ms. Mayor, that we do have clarification on, so it's clear what is being established or presented.
May I say something?
Yeah, of course.
Okay.
You can discuss.
Yes.
Right, but I, can I comment on the comments that were made?
Yes, public comment is closed, it's now council deliberation.
Okay, thank you.
So my initial piece that we make sure the wording is clear, because discussion last month, this one, that's my only piece.
So on 9.02020, Feeding of Feral Cats, it says it shall be unlawful for any person within the city to intentionally provide food, water, or other forms of sustenance to a feral cat or feral cat colony on any street, sidewalk, park, or other public property, or on any private property except with consent of the property owner or a lawful tenant. And it has been mentioned a few different times by people that don't live in Weed, that we want to kill all the cats. And that's, and I'm, I'm, I know that there are people, the woman that lives at 55 North Weed Boulevard, where are you? There you are. Do you guys have a feeding station there in, near your...
We also have a cat house.
And that is completely legal for you to do, because it's on private property and you have the permission of the owner.
Yeah, it says tenant.
Right. And, and, and nobody is going to do anything about that, and I praise you for doing that. And I am thankful to Shasta Cats for putting in this effort. So there are places in this town where the cats are lawfully able to be fed. We are not saying, "Let starving animals walk on the streets." I'm grateful for you, and when you get your own...
We have our paperwork.
Paperwork done, let me know. I, I on a personal basis donate every Giving Tuesday to saving animals. So I'm, I'm slightly offended that I feel like nobody read what it says, because originally it said, "You can't feed feral cats anywhere." But it's America, and if I wanna feed 25 feral cats on my own property, I have the right to do that, and so do you and anybody else that lives in Weed. I'm curious about Liz talking about, it was from Shastina, that somebody bought a lot to legally feed the cats in Mount Shasta. So is Mount Shasta not allowing people to feed their cats on, on...
I think that, I'm sorry, that was my stuff.
Right, you can just stand there and say.
I think that, as far as I know, there's no such ban in that area, but she wanted...
There's not a ban.
Okay, so, but she did it on her own private property?
Well, yeah.
And she's, and she's catching the feral cats?
Because there were a lot of feral cats in that area, and in that neighborhood. She wanted to make sure that she could put into effect the things that really were.
Yes. And there is, I don't think there's any of us that are saying that we want you to stop doing that. I think that it's the, it's the public areas that it's, that it's happening in, because if it's a private piece of property, that has permission, it's okay. And please, continue doing what you're doing. This Humane Society, I mean, I donate to the Humane Society too. Thank you for doing what you're doing, Shasta Cats, thank you for doing what you're doing. We appreciate those things. On a personal basis, I think that it's like trying to put a fire out with a garden hose, but, you know, it is what it is, keep, keep doing it. And whoever talked about the people that leave their cats, there's responsible people all over the place. There are irresponsible people that are raising kids, there are responsible people that are raising dogs, there's irresponsible people raising cats and their parents. So, um, so if, read this, read this and, and see that it says, "We are not banning it, we don't hate everybody, but it needs to not be done on public property."
We're encouraging responsibility.
Right.
Because we need education.
Ms. Mayor?
Mm-hmm, yes.
I'd like to, it's time for us to discuss this, we, Barbara heard from... First of all, the, the idea that, that we have a serious problem of a lot of people in our community abandoning cats, or, or, I, I haven't seen it, I've been here a long time. I'm sure that it does happen, but I think, I think we have to take into consideration that as we, there's no way to enforce that as long as we have cat colonies. There's no, we're not gonna catch, we're not gonna, we're, the, the cats, we see a large number of cats in, in these colonies.
Hang on a second, Bob. It's, you, you guys have all had your opportunity to have your comments, it's now time for the five of us to discuss this amongst ourselves, because remember, this is the only time that legally we can talk to each other.
And I, I think I also want to say that, you know, the showing respect, that, you know, for us to make this decision isn't easy. I mean, we have to, we have to be responsible, and we feel like, I, I feel that we've, we've made a responsible attempt to be as fair and as humane as we could regarding this, this issue. And I also, like I said, regarding the, I was saying, regarding the, our feral cats that are being dumped by our citizens, and that's been said a couple of times in the two meetings that I've been here, which I don't see any, I, I think it's preposterous if somebody say that because we have so many cat colonies. And I also believe that, you know, we have this, you know, we, it's an emotional, I know it's emotional, I know that it's hard, but there's a responsibility here. Now, these cats, we talk about neutering, and we've had this, these cat colonies have been growing, they're not dwindling, they're getting more. Our chief, chief has done a lot of respect, a lot of research regarding that, the numbers, do we have any idea the number, total number of feral cats we have in this community, estimate?
I don't have that estimate, I defer to Shasta Cats since they are the ones out, you know, taking tally of that supposedly.
No, okay. My, my point is, what we've done here with this ordinance, we've happened, we've just cleaned up the, the, we, we've taken the responsibility away from the city that we're going to just dump food wherever we want, and the city's gonna be responsible for those cats. We're not responsible for those cats. The people that are feeding those cats are responsible for those cats. Okay, we, we listen, okay? I, I need a hammer, I think. My point, my point, I listened to you, I listened to you. Okay, my point is this, we can, you can, we, we talked about private property. My answer to it is, Saving Shasta Cats, go to a private party and make the contract with them that we're going to use your property, and we're going to neuter these cats, and if that person decides that they can take on that responsibility, if they can take that responsibility on, then they're going, in agreement, it's between Saving Shasta Cats and this private property, have at it, but don't lay it on us to clean it up.
Councilmember Hall?
Thank you.
May I make a comment?
No.
I'd love to educate you after.
Thank you, I wish you would.
Next week.
Hang on, this is our meeting. Thank you, it's our meeting. Stacy, anything?
How do I word this? My, my, my thinking is that since the last meeting, what I've seen on, on, on social media, what the police chief has mentioned...
Wait, wait, who is that? Cindy, would you stay for a second? One more second?
I actually have schoolwork and I don't want to talk.
Okay, I'm sorry. Well, I wanted, I wanted to compliment you on doing what you do at your aunt's and your grandma's house for spaying and neutering the cats that happened in there, because that is...
I have a super quick question.
That's the correct thing to do, on your grandma's and your aunt's private property. Yeah.
Thank you for all of your time.
May I continue?
Okay, yeah, go ahead.
I'd like to continue with my comment, since I was instructed by the mayor to do so, may I do that, everyone?
Yes, go.
Okay. My concern is behavior. Since last month's meeting, what we've seen, letters we've received, and consultation with chief of police, what actually has happened, has not been truthful. And a lot of things have been shared, and I think the ordinance has addressed, as the mayor eloquently just explained, what it actually reads, has been changed to address some of the concerns. And whether you agree or not, that's my pause, that we just follow what's there, if you just, you're okay to disagree, as I always mention, as Bob and I, we talk about, I may not agree with everything he says, but I'm okay to disagree with him. That's where we have to be, and your behavior speaks to what's actually happening. A lot of language in the letters and people have spoken has not been the truth of what behavior has been in the last month. I've seen it. So I just, I just, I have to say that. I can't, I can't live, and I know you make comments after I speak or looks, I'm not worried about that, but I'm worried about behavior, what you actually do and what you say, and I think that has to be the same.
Could you allow for it?
There's no need to.
No, thank you.
Behavior versus what is communicated or said, period.
All right, thank you, Stacy.
And I'm done, thank you for the comments.
I'll make it very brief. I thought that the mayor described the situation perfectly. We are doing our part to kind of reduce, and I think this ordinance does approach that. Nothing is perfect, if it doesn't work, we can always come back and revise, okay?
Can I ask a quick question?
Sorry. Kim?
Well, based on the letters that we did get in, oh, it's, based on the letters that we got in our email, the information there versus the PowerPoint presentation that we saw last week...
Based on the letters that we got in our email, the information there versus the PowerPoint presentation that we saw last week, or last month, specifically stated about working with Joyce at the Merc for the colonies that she's had there forever. So the the information is conflicting information. One says that Joyce is working with the groups, and one says that Joyce has been telling the groups for four years to stop using her property. So what's the truth?
I can only speak to what was told me, so I I'm not, I mean, what what's been said between the group and Joyce, I don't know. Only what was, after the last council meeting, the owner of the mercantile, Mrs. Oliver, reached out to me, requested that I come over and speak to her about cats. I went over on that Friday, spoke to her. I have since spoken to her as a follow-up, just to verify her statements about a week ago. She stated that she has been asking Shasta Cats for four years to stop feeding behind her property. She indicated that there is an ongoing issue with them, and she didn't say that it's Nicole. I want to, I want to take Nicole out of this. Nicole was not mentioned. So these are the the volunteers pushing open the crawl spaces for the cats to get under the building. She does not want the cats in the building. They are all throughout the building, climbing through the walls, up into the upper levels. Then she referred to the previous TNR that was attempted, prior to, I believe, Shasta Cats, and how that had failed. And she was actually paying for the spay and neuter at that time. After that TNR failed, the cats were continued to be fed by that group. She had to ask them to stop because, per her words, the cats were actually stealing food off the barbecue and from the restaurant, despite being fed on the side of the building over here. At that time, she asked them to move to the back where Shasta Cats were feeding as well. So I don't know that that group's even participating. That is not Shasta Cats. So that was a separate group. In speaking with her, she she stated that she has raccoons that she believes on the, believes is caused by the ongoing feeding of the cats, and the crawl space is being pushed open. After that meeting, the crawl space, I know, was closed. By that Monday, the crawl space was open this far, and by that Tuesday, the crawl space was open that far. So somebody is doing that. I don't know who, but it is believed to be associated with the Shasta Cats based on her statement that she spoke to somebody she described as a male. She didn't say the name, and they told one of her workers that if we don't push the crawl space open, the cats can't get in and out. So that's, that was what was reiterated to me from Joyce on two occasions.
Yes.
Mayor, I would say that we're facing.
Here's your microphone.
Hey, I always. Mayor, I would like to say that there's probably not going to be a perfect solution to make all parties happy. We've come across these things before. I think this is a good attempt at doing the best we can with the knowledge we have. Therefore, I would like to make a motion that we have the second reading and adoption of ordinance number 464-2021, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Weed, adding chapter 9.02 to Title IX of the Weed Municipal Code regarding feeding the feral cats.
Are you making that a motion?
Yes, it's a motion.
I second it.
It's been moved and seconded to approve ordinance number 464-2021. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Thank you.
Done. Thank you.
Thank you for being patient with me.
Okay, I find where I am here.
I am deeply.
Moving on to council business, item eight, a grant application, approve application for rural recreation and tourism program grant funds. Tim, is that you?
Yes, Madam Mayor and Counsel, before you tonight is a resolution 20-2021. It is in regards to the city applying for some funds to build a dog park in South Weed. The dog park will primarily be utilized by travelers, we believe, coming in and off the state, which, or off the interstate, which would qualify us for some tourism dollars in order to achieve that. So the resolution before you tonight, now, I will say that the funding is 100%. So there are two pieces of property that are up there, up on the screen. The one between Shastina and Black Butte, that says number 16 in the middle of it, is a piece of property currently owned by the Comfort Inn. Raj's family there, they own that, and they have spoken and said they'd be willing to sell that in order to achieve a a dog park. The one up to the north of it, off of Shastina Drive, is city-owned property. We are looking at putting a parking lot there on that piece of property and utilizing a a crosswalk for folks to be able to park and then bring their dogs across there in a safe manner instead of just dashing across the street. So tonight is just simply a resolution for us to send in an application for the dog, for the the grant application itself. And is Anna, Anna, there she is. She's our grant writer for the proposal, and she would be willing to answer any questions if you have any in regards to the resolution tonight.
I do have a question, Ms. Mayor. So the grant is for the property for the parking and the park, is that correct?
Yes.
Well, no, we already own the par, property for the parking.
For maintenance or?
No, to repay, to pave it, yes. And also, I'd like to add that Anna has connections with the Conservation Corps, and that we have gotten letters from them saying that they would send crews down here, hand crews, to clear the lots and get all the brush and everything off if if we received the grant, so, which would help keep our costs down.
Which I can add, I can add to that. The the grant is very competitive. It's not a guarantee that you would win the grant, right? It's a very competitive grant. You can ask for up to $3 million. The minimum is $200,000. And so the scope of the project that Tim is presenting is at least $200,000, which is why we're trying to go for the grant. The Conservation Corps piece of it actually makes it more competitive. You you have to actually apply with the Conservation Corps in order to stay in that competitive realm. They can say, you know, this is not a project that we think we have any workability with, but they can also tell you that they do. And either way, you win because you get the, you get the points for attempting, and they've already accepted that they would take the the project on if we were awarded the grant. So this is part of the compatibility of of doing that grant. It does mean that the the work that gets completed by the Conservation Corps is now not in that prevailing wage, right? It's it's contracted differently, so the cost goes down because you don't have to hire somebody directly at prevailing wage. So that's good. And you, and and we get to quote with the project manager from the Conservation Corps, we get to quote with them how much time and effort we think it's going to take, and then they plan it out based off of that. So there's, there's lots of work to do. We, we're really just getting started on the actual application piece. And I, hopefully, Tim doesn't mind, I say that part of it is to, another competitive part, 15 of the, of the 100 points we can earn is based on community input. And so I plan on coming back to Weed on next Saturday.
The 23rd.
The 23rd, and doing an 11 o'clock and a 1 o'clock session, and just, it's a listen-to-learn session. I mean, I realize that the council probably has a lot of direction on what they want, and the dog park is a pretty simple project. It's offense and some guidelines around that, but but you want to hear your community and be able to document that you actually completed these sessions with the community, and it makes you more competitive. If you don't do it, you automatically lose 15 points. So we'll do that next Saturday, the 23rd, and then follow it up with a community survey, which can be shared. However, whatever means Weed has to share community surveys, I can build it in like Google Docs and collect data and and then represent it so that you get multiple facets of information coming in. And then we use that to write the grant to say, this is what we, as a community, want to see in this application, and it's just part of the whole competitiveness of it.
You have a question?
Yeah.
As the grant writer selected for this, what is your thoughts right now at this point, based on the avenues you just explained to get approval? What are your thoughts right now?
Well, I think, so the rural recreation and tourism grant is meant to provide tourism. To me, a dog park isn't a tourist attraction, and although the people are going to come to Weed for a dog park, but they're going to come to Weed because they have to travel through Weed anyways. And while they're here, something like that will get them to stop and stay longer. So because to me, and I've talked to Tim about this, the grant is, you're not asking for $3 million for a dog park. You're going to, it'll probably be 300 to 400,000. You're on the lower scale of that ask. I would, I would say that you're on the competitive end just because you have, you're going to, you may sneak into the the funding because you're not asking for the big lump sum. I'm writing other grants for other communities. I live in Doris, actually, and and I have a couple of grants in that community in the millions, so.
Well, sneak quietly.
So, yeah, so we want to sneak into the, for instance, last year, there is a similar grant that was awarded to the City of Tulley Lake for a veterans' park. They expanded a park. They added some benches and grass.
We heard about that last night. Thank you.
Yeah, and then, and, you know, they asked for like $423,000, and they were awarded it. And the way I looked at it was, well, they didn't ask for this huge, big event thing happening, you know, so they got a park out of it, which is awesome. It's a really nice-looking park, and they're about to do a ribbon cutting and everything in the next couple of days. But, but could they have asked for like a $3 million building or something, you know? So I see a dog park as maybe being a little less competitive on the rural tourism piece of it, but you're not asking for a $3 million dog park either.
Thank you for your interest and participation. We appreciate that. Support.
I have a question. If we go forward with this, do we have the ability to modify the area? My my big concern is that we have that piece of property on the north side. All I can see is another 15 semi-trucks parking on it, but.
We can, we can take care of that.
I I know, but with signage maybe or something, but there's also natural parking. We have two motels or three motels around that same vicinity. Do we need the extra parking? Would be my concern.
Well, and the reason why we did that, Councilmember Palafini, was because with the Comfort Inn, and by the way, they are a pet-friendly hotel. Some of the others are down there as well. If they have an event or something going on there, and the parking is jammed up, because that's private property where they're at, that's why we were looking. And I think we can get that designed, the parking lot designed to where tractor trailers won't even be able to come onto the property. So there's ways of of doing that, and I understand your point because we have a lot of illegal parking down there, but we can design that to to curb that immediately.
Also, as as far as writing the grant for what you're, you're, the state is looking for a budget that's a predictive budget of what it's going to cost to develop it, and you don't get lump sum money if you're awarded it, right? It's not, here's a check for $400,000, now go produce it. It's here, you know, you produce a part of it, and then it's kind of a reimbursement type of system. The way that I picture it for the other grants I'm writing too is that the the state would pay it based off of the invoice I have from the construction company, not me paying it and then being reimbursed. But when I say that, so if you had a budget of $400,000 or whatever it ends up being, we have to deal all the quotes and and pieces of that still. But when you have that final budget, it doesn't mean that you're locked into that this bench will be right here on this piece of property or whatever. There's more flexibility there. They don't ask you for the, in the granular details. They're asking for the the broader details that you can then modify, like work around, so that could change. I mean, you could start with a plan, and then it'd be a little bit modified a little bit from there, as long as you stay in budget.
Ms. Mayor?
Yes.
Question. Now, the the funding of this is just to build it, to 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 build it. As far, as far as maintaining it?
Yeah, so there's a 30-year agreement that the City of Weed, as the applicant, would would guarantee the maintenance of it for 30 years. And luckily, a dog park is pretty low maintenance, really.
What?
Oh, we got to put grass in.
Yeah.
Is it low maintenance?
Never had one.
Okay, okay. Are you, what's your?
I have. They're not, there's not a whole lot to them. Like you said, you might have a little bit of irrigation if you wanted to put in there, and the actual cleanup. Most of the times, the pet owners are very responsible in picking up after their dogs, and you have waste stations. The big thing is just the mowing during the seasonal parts of that, and we do have a contract with the Parks and Recreation. And so.
You can do it.
So it's your responsibility.
So, yeah, luckily, it's a low-maintenance project, if you ask me.
And and when I first started with the committee and getting people together, you know, I was seeing pictures in these beautiful, beautiful lawns, and then people started bringing me pictures of actual parks that are around here. Nobody has a lawn. It's all dirt. So I'm like, oh, you can scratch that part. But a drinking fountain costs $7,000. So even though it sounds like, oh, that'd be an easy, cheap, it it won't be.
I don't want it to just be being cheap because the land acquis, but the good thing is too, the land acquisition is built into the grant application, and you can acquire land with this, and you can actually acquire, make the whole entire application be that you acquired land, and that's it. But there's a project idea that could go in that, on that land that's going to take money as well, and then there's the opportunity, at least an opportunity to try to have the funding through an application.
And just additional information, so this is a competitive grant, but we're not competing with the entire state of California. We're only competing with other rural, so that there's actually a population written into, you have to have at least this many people, and you can't have more than this many people to actually qualify to even apply.
County's less than 500,000 people, and city's less than 50, which we definitely qualify. But it also is 100% funded. It's, there's no match, as long as you're, as long as you're under the, just like $48,000, $53,000.
The poverty.
Poverty line, yeah.
And we qualify.
I'm just looking for your great sneaking ability, that's all.
We are well-qualified for all of this.
So this is part of Prop 68, which actually started in 2018, and we have, there's different parts of the grant, and we already have the per capita parts. The city has one, and the rec department has one for other projects. And then the rec department will also be submitting one for the rural rec grant, but for.
Something separate.
Yeah. We'll, we'll talk about that at our meeting next week.
And and a park itself can be represented once, but an organization can write for multiple, like the City of Weed could write for, as long as there's different scopes, different parks, which is why Kim can do that, right? But 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 one park can't be represented in multiple applications.
So financially, it's covered?
Yeah.
Yeah, it would be covered, yeah.
Okay. Any more questions?
If you win.
I, I, Ms. Mayor, I'd like to move adoption of resolution number 20.2021, a resolution of the City Council of City of Weed approving the application for rural recreation and tourism program grant funds.
I will second that.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the grant application for rural recreation and tourism. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okeydoke. Okay, item B, a request, a public hearing of the County Committee on School District Reorganization, Organizations for Research and Consideration of Reorganization.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. So as you all.
I told you, you couldn't leave.
Do you want to take a moment, Councilmember Green, or?
That's fine. Just keep going.
Okay, as you all likely remember, a few months ago, we heard a, had an initial conversation about potentially adopting a resolution to do the same thing. So I will be brief in my comments. I I think there are folks in the audience that will provide public comment that can speak a little more eloquently about this entire process, but I will summarize. In short, education, or the City of Weed, the Weed City Council has received several requests from residents, parents, and students from Weed Union High School to initiate a reorganization of the Siskiyou Union High School Districts. So Weed Union High School and the territory it serves are instead included in the Weed Union Elementary School District. Education Code Section 35721, subsection C, allows three ways for this process to begin, basically. In any of those three options, either the city or members of the public can require what's called the County Committee on School District Organization to consider a request for organization or unification of school districts. Those three options are a petition signed by at least 10% of qualified electors in any district, a petition signed by at least 5%, this one doesn't apply to us, for districts with over 200,000 pupils, which I don't think we'd quite, I think we'd just squeak right under there. And finally, the option in front of the council today is a resolution approved by a majority of the members of the City Council, County Board of Supervisors, governing body of a special district. a special district, or local agency formation commission, ALAFCO, that has jurisdiction over all or a portion of the school district. So basically, if the County Committee on School District Organization, uh, oh, thanks, receives, uh, if the city approved the resolution that's attached, the city council, then the county committee has to go through a process where it researches the proposed reorganization, and then ultimately holds a public hearing on the proposal. Um, if the county council, county committee grants that request, then it adopts a tentative recommendation, does some more public hearings, then adopts a final recommendation that goes to the State Board of Education for even more hearings and adoption or elec- or an election on the matter. Um, so this resolution ultimately would basically require the County Committee on Reorganization, or on School District Organization to hold, have, do that research and hold that hearing. Before I stop talking, uh, I just wanted to, a council member pointed out a, um, holdover from our prior resolution that I would like to correct, um, and hopefully, um, you can either adopt it as it was originally proposed in here, or if you, if you are adopting it, or with this change. That is the fifth, uh, recital, starting with whereas the city council desires to support reorganization. Uh, that was intended to say, whereas the city council desires to support the further study of reorganization, um, of the school districts in the manner described above. So my recommendation, um, is if you are adopting a resolution at the end of this item, is to adopt it with that minor change, to clarify that, that the action being taken today is, is a desire to support further study of this organization, reorganization, not necessarily a statement of whether the city council, um, supports, supports the reorganization. So with that, um, I'm here to answer any questions, but otherwise, continue.
Thank you, Brian. Um, do we have anybody in the audience who would like to comment on this?
All the doors, people left.
Kevin, thank you, and by the way, thank you for closing the door when you did it a minute ago.
Look, I, you're dying for somebody to speak, so I figured I could, I'll get up and talk. Great.
You guys, your heads have blown up.
Well, good evening, my name's Kevin Charter, I'm at 3835 Columbine Road, and I appreciate the time to advocate on behalf of many parents and students at Weed High School. As time marches on through the decades, things change, uh, those that can adapt to changes thrive, and those that are unwilling to change sometimes die out. The model of having Weed, Happy Camp, McLeod, and Mount Shasta students all in the same school district is one of the old models, uh, that in my opinion needs to be determined if a change is warranted. Although we are all small communities in the south part of the county, there are unique differences to the wants and needs of parents, uh, and the education of their children, and the needs of the students. The school, current school board is comprised of three Mount Shasta members, who are present here tonight, two Weed members, one from Happy Camp, and one member representing McLeod. This idea of reunification is not new to Siskiyou County, as Kermit Walters informed us during his informational meeting he conducted for us all, and explained to the process, um, and the communities of Happy Camp, McLeod, and Ma- Mount Shasta can make their own decisions on unifying their community schools if they choose to do so. We are excited about the opportunity to have a school board that is comprised of Weed residents, looking after the unique needs of Weed students and staff of its schools. The current system is too inflexible to deal with the different needs of each community. I've witnessed this over the last 19 board meetings, and there is a better model, uh, that is, uh, that, uh, our students could engage in. Again, this is only a study to determine the feasibility of unifying Weed, Weed Elementary and Weed High School. You are not to be burdened, as was stated, with the role of listening to the pros and cons of the study, nor making the final determination. Uh, any discussion of why or why not this should be done is completely premature, uh, it is the purpose of the study, uh, to go through, that Kermit will engage in. Now, as I stated last month, we don't know what we don't know, and this study will illustrate whether or not this is a doable plan. We're asking for your help to just simply facilitate the start of the study, and that is it. Uh, if the study determines it is not feasible, then things will stay as they are. If it is feasible to unify the schools, we will have a democratic vote initially, or finally, to determine what our citizens want. That burden is not on the Weed City Council to do that. There is no harm in researching and asking questions to make informed decisions, I think we can all agree on that. Uh, we appreciate your support of Weed parents and Weed students to help provide an opportunity for a Weed unified school district for us all, thanks so much.
Thank you, Kevin. He always says binder.
It's your midnight reading material.
It's your name and address where you are, sir?
Oh, name and address.
Mike Matheson, Superintendent, Siskiyou Union High School District, um, 17133 Casper Road.
That would be Lake Chastina?
It would be, yes. Honorable Mayor Tavallaro, Mayor Pro Tem Green, and members of the Weed City Council. I have to say that the members of the Siskiyou Union High School District Board of Education are, have always been incredibly honorable, hard-working individuals who care deeply about all of the students of the Siskiyou Union High School District. They are elected at large, meaning Weed citizens also vote for the citizens, the members that represent the other communities. They work to represent all of our students and have done a tremendous job doing that. So I thank you in advance for your careful consideration of this resolution before you tonight. I am here to support and protect the integrity and future of the educational system for the students and families of Weed. From what I have learned about the district reorganization process, and based on my 30 years' experience as an educator, I can assure you that the passing of this resolution is not in the best interest of our students' educational process and future. This is the state guide to reorganization. Um, I won't give it to you for your reading assignment tonight, but I have a summary of the process that, um, your council outlined, um, but I want you to pay attention to me and still look at that, so, um, I sat with Kermit Walters today, and he was sitting in front of one of many binders that represents the Siskiyou, I mean, I'm sorry, the Scott Valley Unified School District study that was done and process that took place. This is not a process that we need to be engaging in at this time. This is a highly complicated process, a, one that has the potential to, uh, be divisive and disrupt what we should be doing right now, and that's being focused on, um, re-engaging our students and re-engaging our families. Because at this point, we do not know the breadth or depth of the concerns that are before us, please do not pass this resolution and set in motion this process. Let those that have the concerns do the heavy lifting and seek the petition process that includes the voices of all the individuals that represent, um, the Weed High School and Weed Elementary School attendance area. 50% of our families live outside the city of Weed. So for the sake of the future of our Weed, uh, students, let those voices be heard as well, thank you.
Does Jeremy do that? No, it's Sandy.
Sandy.
Thank you, Mike. Anybody else?
Shawty.
Oh, do you want us to have those?
Here, Mike.
Thanks, Mike.
Yes, she does, that is why.
That's where I got my impression.
Anybody else? Are you standing up to speak? Or stretch? Uh, name and address?
John Ray.
Mm-hmm.
6725 Hogan Drive.
That would be Lake Chastina?
That would be.
Thank you.
I would like to talk to you about feral cats.
You are not right.
Ow!
Um, to go back to that previous agenda item, I do commend you. I don't want to pick a side of the feral cat, but I commend you on the process that you undertook, the way you listened. Uh, Mayor Tavallaro, I really and greatly appreciate the way you distinctly appreciate and dissect the comments that you're hearing from to hear the address. Born and raised here in Weed, I do know tradition, I do know our, our community. I happen to, um, disagree with, um, Mr. Matheson. I have a ton of respect for Siskiyou Union High School District being a graduate, a ton of respect for previous members and teachers, and it isn't about that, of who's doing something better, what it's about is, is there a better way to serve the community of Weed and the kids of Weed? Is there a better way to get these kids motivated, get them to accomplish their dreams? And it's not that we aren't doing fantastic work, because I believe both sides are doing some fantastic work, but if there is a better way to do it, boy, I would love to see it. And I don't have the resources to tell you that. By Ed Code, as he exam, as he pointed out, the Siskiyou County Office of Ed is charged with this. It is on the Siskiyou County Office of Ed under the board, it'll say, we're the redistricting committee as well, we receive revenue for this, it is our job to do these studies. They have low thresholds of 10% of the population or a resolution, because we have legislative action backing that we have to continue looking how we're serving kids. Is there a better model? We don't have the resources, county offices do. I say, let's do the study, let's look at the facts, and then let's start developing a process to see which way we want to go, but we need somebody to give us those facts, and it shouldn't be one of us. It should be a committee that is quest to do this. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Good evening, my name's Jill Porterfield, 5832 Black Bear Road, Lake Chastina.
That's Lake Chastina?
It is Lake Chastina. And I just want to voice my support for doing this study, um, I'm confused why we wouldn't support doing that, looking at all the alternatives. My experience with, um, the Siskiyou, um, school district, Union High School District is, um, they lack responsiveness, I think they're serving too large of a district to be responsive to our community and our kids, um, uh, and I just feel having it more localized and focused on the kids in our community and the constituency here could be a benefit, would be a benefit. We're a very different constituency than what you have in Mount Shasta, um, and I, I'm proud of that, I think that's a good thing, um, so I would just encourage you to please, please vote in support of the study. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay. Do you have a comment?
I, of course I do.
Okay.
In meeting with the, it wasn't costing anything, in meeting with the leaders of the organizations, I asked one question, what's the benefit for the students? I'm not worried, I'm worried about the teachers, yes, but what will the students get? And I heard interesting answers, and answers that supported both sides for student achievement, I appreciate, Mr. Murray, I appreciate you saying that, and the, the female lady just spoke. Um, that's the ultimate bottom line, what is gonna be best for our students, youth always from K through 12, and that's my focus, and I'm, I'm sorry that other advocates cannot be presented to get together before it be presented to whoever, but, um, that's ultimately my drive, and that, and that's my tossing in the last few months on this discussion on where's it gonna happen, how's it gonna happen, what are our kids gonna get? I, as Kim, I always bet this, Kim and I, we've been here since kindergarten, and we've been, well, before that, but we went through both school systems, and you can call us successful or not, or helpful or knowledgeable to the community, I think that's the bottom line, and I appreciate everyone's, both sides, that support that effort. When I don't hear that effort, that talks about the educational quality of our students, then I get concerned, and that's where I'm at. That's all.
Mr. Hall?
Ms. Mayor, I do have a comment, I believe. Um, my, my biggest concern i- is the, the education of the kids, of course, but it's really about community participation. That's what's going to heal our community, community participation. I've been to school board meetings, and quite often I heard, we can't do anything about it, that's the county. We can't, we, we, we can't even talk to you about it, it's, it's a done deal. And me being who I am, I, you know, I can continue going, but the average, average person says, oh, God, I'm, I'm not gonna waste my time going up there, I'm not gonna be involved, and my point is, is that, that's, the school system in Weed is our responsibility, it's not the teacher's responsibility or the administrator's responsibility, it's the community's responsibility. And I've told this story before, and I'll tell it again, I was over in Fall River, basketball tournament, and in between the games, I'm standing there talking to the administrator over there, and I talk, I asked her, I said, how do you do this? She, what do you mean, Bob? I says, your, your, your programs are so solid, your kids look, you know, they're so uniform and so, you know, in shape, they, and, and I see your academics out here in Foray, you're off the chart, how do you do that? She said, well, Bob, they'd get rid of me if I didn't. And I thought, the community I live in expect this. They don't demand it, they don't know that they can, they don't understand the process, they don't understand that it's their school. So when it comes to this, I, 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 I really feel that we don't have enough information to even, you know, dip our toe into it. I want more information, and, uh, to make a sound decision, and I, I, I personally think that we should, uh, um, continue with the study, or at least initiate the study so we have something to make a decision on, and I hear again, I go back to community participation. I still have a dream that we're gonna come together, I still have a dream that we're gonna learn how to work together. I still have a dream, I really do, that we have what it takes to, for the, in the 21st century to be what we are. I, I see our community as a, as a, uh, diversity USA. I see us using cannabis, uh, as what we can of it, but I see hemp coming in.
Uh-oh.
I see, yeah, I see a dream, I see jobs, you know, and that's what I think about, you know, but it's gonna take a community to do that, it's not just an administrator here or there that's gonna save us, there's not one person gonna save us, it's gonna be something collective. So, uh, I am, I'm in favor of the, uh, continuing with the, uh, the resi, I'm in favor of the resolution.
Kim, do you have anything to say? Sorry, Jeremy.
Uh, yeah, I, I probably not really far off from my original outlook on this proposal. I, I think the council here does probably agree that a study is necessary, I don't see any dispute here. Um, my dispute is how do we get there? First I hear we want, it doesn't belong in the city's purview, then I hear, but we want to utilize your governmental tool to get there. It comes to me is, are we doing it as an approved study for free, without any legwork? I believe the petition process is that legwork. We have a small vocal group, I don't know how big that group is, I, I see the group as slightly bigger than it was the time before, but truthfully, we had more comment on cats than we did on our students and our, on our kids. That kind of disappoints me, really, and that hurts me more than actually anything here. Um, it also got some divisiveness about, we need to break off. Yeah, it's possible we do, times, times are changing, we need to grow, um, but you also have to remember there's... Times, times are changing, we need to grow, but you also have to remember there's four neighborhoods involved. I know a lot of us grew up in a neighborhood where McLeod, Mount Shasta, Dunsmere, Weed, Edna, Fort Jones, am I missing anybody? Happy Camparol in one school district?
Wryreek, I do.
Wryreek, I think was, I don't know, I don't, I don't go back that far.
I do.
But, but indeed, times do change. Is it necessary now? Maybe, maybe not, but again, I would say it needs legwork. The public that's involved, the citizens of Weed, the citizens of Shastina, the people that send their kids to our schools, their parents need to be involved, they need to know what's going on, the teachers need to know what's going on. I think by short-circuiting this process, by having the council say, "Ah, just throw it up to the county," that's just not good for me. I mean, it might be good for some folks, I don't know, but is it the best process even for the time? We, we have, we're coming out of a pandemic, hopefully, but we can't even agree whether to wear a mask, not wear a mask.
Come on now.
I can go on a number of things, but I'll stay out of the politic of that. Second of all, I don't know who writes this petition, if there is a petition that gathers votes, who writes the petition? Do we know? Is it the?
County.
I presume the folks gathering the signatures on the petition would prepare the petition and then have somebody sign that.
So, we have two opposing groups, so they would have.
Somebody in the audience knows, has a better answer than I do. He's the one with the binder.
Yeah.
I know it has to meet the standard petition for ballot criteria, so it's got font size, it's got, have an appropriate description, so the people know if they're signing.
Okay.
If the group that gather.
But does the county, county write the petition, or does the two groups get together to write the petition?
The, the people who want the petition to take place write it.
Write it, okay.
So.
Okay.
So, Councilmember Palfini, it's, it's similar to a ballot initiative, where the initiative proponent would write the petition and then circulate it for signatures, and then I presume it would go straight to the county for, to verify the adequacy of the signatures. I don't, I don't know that the city would be involved at that stage.
Also was mentioned that resources are, are not shared properly, or maybe not efficiently, I should say. But there are resources, I believe, that are shared between all the high schools. I don't know about elementary schools, but I know there's, high schools do share resources. So, so not to keep this going on forever, my, my thing is, is do we make a decision for expediency from this council's position, or gather information and base our decision on community support? And I see the petition process as the community support piece. Blah, blah.
Ms. Mayor?
Thank you. Yes.
Have another comment?
Sure.
Yeah, I, Mr. Palfini, I totally agree with most of what you're saying, but my, my concern is, when we do the petition, now, if we're, if we're going to, if the petition's going to be drawn up right now, we need a percentage of the number of signatures on that petition would have to incorporate McLeod?
No.
Just, just Weed?
Yes.
Just the, so the Weed?
Registered voters within the school district.
Within the Weed High School District?
High School District.
Which goes out to Gallup? It goes to Truck Village?
According to.
Goes however far that way till there aren't any more people, and then it goes to Old Stage.
And according to the county election clerk, Laura, she said, "I believe there's about 2,300 registered voters within that area, so the 10% would be about 230 needed."
And how, how many kids do we have in the system? 400? 500?
338 at Weed Elementary.
300, okay.
How many, how many are at Butteville?
Butteville part?
Butteville's not a part of it.
Yes, Butteville is a part of it. Hang on. How, 200 at Weed? So, we're at five something. How many are at Butteville? 200?
235, I'm guessing.
How much?
Maybe 235, around there.
Okay. So, we're talking 700 kids, and the reason it does include Butteville, because the petition can go within the Weed Division of the Siskiyou Union High School District.
And I was told, and I was told that 50% of the students' parents are outside of the Weed City Limits. Is that correct?
Not the district.
Well, they, yeah, they all live within the Weed High School District. Some of them are at Butteville, some of them are at Weed Elementary.
Whatever the numbers, my piece is, all parents should be able to have a voice, students of both institutions. However, that's magnified, and I don't hear that process. That's what you're talking about, maybe that's the process, but I believe that parents and teachers of both organizations need to be the ones that are their input. I know those numbers come from, so.
I, I tend to, I think what's going to happen, prediction, is nothing's going to happen if, if we don't, if we don't initiate this. I don't think, I, I.
The name must not really want this.
Well, that's, that's, that's possible, you know, but I'm just saying that, you know, that that's probably what's going to happen, is that nothing's going to happen, and that's what's been happening.
That, that's a good reality point. I think that's real. I believe that's real.
Well, I, I would, I want to hope to disagree with that.
Well, hope?
I want to hope that there's a group out there, can hope, that there is a group out there that wants to see this happen, and they can get the 230 signatures. You don't think they could.
I don't see it happening, no. I think they could, but, you know, I don't see anybody, I don't see the numbers.
Commentas, or?
I, I think if you address it properly, a petition is always doable. It does, to me, it signifies people willing to go a little bit extra to get something started. I, I, I think it's important for our community to do it that way, because we don't seem to gel all that well, but if we can maybe take an issue, maybe it'll help us.
I, I see it as.
I see apathy as being, our, existing big time in our community, apathy. And that's what, by bringing this to the forefront, bringing it up to, so that we can discuss it, I think it's healthy.
I think they can get it, because I'm going to put on my rose-colored glasses.
Okay.
Kim, would you like to say anything?
Go ahead.
So, these two will start?
Well, do I want to see the results of the study? Yes. But do I want to be in that as a councilperson or as a community member? And I think as a community member. So, as a councilperson, I, I'm not for us voting on this resolution to start the process.
Thank you for that, councilmember, community member, three years old, 58 years old.
Now, we know.
Nine.
I wish, and I, and I've been losing.
She has those rose-colored glasses on, too.
I wish and hoping. Somebody wrote a song about that, but I wanted to see as many people here, parents, because all of, you guys are my friends, and as far as anybody that I know of right now that has a kid in Weed Elementary School or Weed High School, there's two, three. And I wanted you to be as passion, I wanted those people that were passionate about, as passionate about the feral cats to be passionate about this. And there was a part of me that felt sorry for you guys that you were here listening to that, but then, on the other hand, are there, are there passionate parents out there? Can those passionate parents, if there's 50 of them, can they get a petition? And why not?
Can I just say something?
Sure.
So, it's, I've been at 19 school board meetings, I think Siskiyou High School District has 458 total students. Two of its parents have made every meeting in the last 15 months, two.
Well, I.
But that's proving our point.
So, what Bob is saying, it's absolutely true. You're asking, if they don't come to school board meetings.
No, I know, I was there for eight years. They didn't come unless you want to let the boys in the girls bathrooms, and they'll come.
It's true.
And, and it's.
We've been through pot, we've been through water, we've been through cats, we've been through dogs.
Chickens.
Chickens.
My first meeting chickens.
And it gets more people than here.
Fences.
So.
Fences for pigs?
Yep.
Sure?
Well, I just, I just wanted to say, I've been on school boards for 21 years, almost, and you'll know as, as, as well as I do, that parents don't come if they think it's going well. And at Weed Elementary, we have very short meetings, because we don't have a lot of public input, because our parents trust us, that we're doing the right thing. If we're not doing the right thing, I should hear from them. So, when we talk to, we talk to people, like, if you, this is what I say, if you're interested, talk to your councilmember, but, and, and come to the meeting, but they just, it's, they just trust that we're going to do the right thing.
If you're looking for voters, you should maybe look at, it's called the theory, Maslow's Theory of Needs. It'll, it'll kind of advise you of why you get reactions and why you don't get reactions, but it could be a, a lesson. I always was complaining, Bob will attest, "Where's the volunteers? Where's the volunteers?"
Well, I'm not complaining that our parents are happy with us.
I'm not, I'm just saying, is, is, some people, the job to get votes is to find people willing to step beyond their current needs. If they're worried about hand-to-mouth with food, they're not much of a volunteer. So, I, I would just say expectancies, that's all.
Ms. Mayor, I have one, one other.
Sorry, I just have one more comment.
Yeah, can.
Was, this process is the way of getting that study without taking money from the students. This is, does not cost the council, it does not cost the school to do this. If we have to do a petition, parents, we gather them up, it's going to cost money, and that, that committee is already being paid. They were already getting revenue to perform these studies. So, I just would like you to consider, we don't want to take money from the students.
How, how would it take money from the students?
Mike's going to tell you.
So, you would need, if you, was that a question?
Yeah, yes, yes. Go ahead.
So, if you wanted to draw up a petition, the petition would obviously, they would, some of the requests would come to the board. We'd have to have our legal counsel involved with that. Legal counsel's going to charge about $500 an hour. In addition to that, somebody's going to have to pay for the verification of the, of the signatures.
Ryan wants to beat up legal counsel.
So, this legal committee is either going to have to do some fundraising, or we're going to have to take out of the fund if, if the school board so chose. But it does take resources to get a petition signed.
And basically, the resources are paying the attorney?
Correct.
Okay. Mike?
As I understood, Weed Elementary wasn't pursuing this, that they would have to cost. What I hear is that they would be pursuing this, so they would then incur cost. What I'm suggesting is, this would, we need to hear from the parents who, of, of the entire attendance area.
Right.
And we haven't.
But that's the public hearing.
Excuse me.
Sorry.
So, and, and they could incur that cost. They can do that work to be heard. So, that's, and to say that this isn't going to cost anybody money, the county's going to incur this cost, and I talked to Kermit, they do not get extra money for this. This is in their purview to do, but right now, they are strapped for resources and time and staffing as we all are. So, to say that we're going to engage in this multi-year study and come up with a multi-hundred-page document, and no one's going to take resources away from our students, the county provides support for all of us, and we need that support. You know, we've got a brand-new CBO, we've got a lot of changes taken place there as well, so it's going to be a process that will take resources away, and at a time when we need to be focusing our resources, direct it right at our students, this is not what we need to do at this time.
Ms. Mayor, one more comment, then I'm finished. I, I, I think, you know, I, I hope everybody understands, I, I am concerned about my community, my, you know, Weed, the people we're responsible for. And when you take, when we take an inventory of Weed, we find that, we, they say we have 1,500 jobs in Weed. We have about 1,500 jobs. I'm going to go, I'm going out on a limb without knowing, but just what I feel, I'm going to say that 60% of the livable wage jobs are held by people that don't live in Weed. I'm being conservative.
Probably so.
Okay. So, I, I want us to take a look at our, the inventory of the people that we have. We have a lot of people that don't know how to do much of anything. We have the lowest rent in the county. These are good people. They're good people, but they don't have the information they need, and I don't think that we're, they're going to get the inform, maybe if we, it works out like we're hoping that it works out, maybe it'll, maybe it'll come to fruition, but if it doesn't, it's not going to come to fruition, there's not going to be any changes, we're going to keep going the same way we are, and we're going to have people making decisions that really don't even live here, or that we're not responsible for, that aren't in our, in, in our district. And I, I really think it's important that we understand that our community needs help. Somebody needs to stand up and lead here.
Sounds like it's time to vote.
Well, and, sorry, Jeremy, when I sat on the board for eight years, I agree with Mike when he said, and I know two of those people I sat on the board with, it was, I was concerned about the kids in Happy Camp, and I was concerned about the kids in McLeod, and I was concerned about the kids in Mount Shasta, and maybe so slightly more concerned about the kids in Weed, but that was my job to be, but I was concerned about all the kids. So, I agree with that. I don't think there's anybody on that board that is not supporting every single student in the Siskiyou Union High School District, being McLeod, Happy Camp, Weed, Mount Shasta. What I'm concerned about, Kevin, is that we haven't had parents here saying that they want this. We've had schools here, we've had board members, but we haven't had the parents. And if I would just have the parents here to say, "Yes, please do this, so we don't have to do that," we've had three or four parents, which I, and I want that study. I would love to see that study.
She doesn't want to read all three hundred pages.
But I want it to come from the parents. I want it to be a grassroots, and I get that there's, you know, 10% of the people do 90% of the work, and, and I get that, but we've got to find those 10% of those parents, because if it's, if they really want it, they're out there. And I know that you know them, but to get it, to get it moving.
Ms. Mayor, I'd like to. I'll chance on to a point. I can speak to my parents. They came to no board meeting for either side because they trusted the staff in place. So, the question I propose is, is that trust still here with the parents because of the non-lack of communication? I, I can't answer that. I can't answer. I'm not a parent. I'm an uncle, but I'm not a parent. So, I don't, that's still my question. I agree with that. I, I want to hear what parents say, and what the parents and grandparents say about their children. What's the quality that has been happening? Is that still happening? I, I can speak for myself, people I know, but I can't speak for others. And you're right, all I've heard is the leadership and the board members, "Where are the parents at? Dang it." My parents, my mom said, "If I have to go to one meeting, your butt is biding." She never had to, because she trusted what was being delivered. I don't know if that's same premises now. I, I just don't know that.
Well, and this doesn't require parents going to meetings. It would.
Well, communication.
It would require parents feet hitting the ground.
Do we have that?
And helping for, with the petition.
Do we have that?
Here, how many, what number would you want physically present here that would make a difference?
Um.
I think that three here, if I want this to happen.
250.
A high percentage of the quality of, of the student population. I don't know what that number is. Is three or two enough? I don't know. I'm not a mathematician.
If you do the study and then the vote, isn't that what tells you who wants and what outcomes?
But that's the question of who initiates the, the, the protocol to make this happen. That's the question to us right now, right?
Yeah.
So, we're not saying that the study can't happen. The study's going to happen. It's either going to be.
How does it start?
One of these three ways that are.
Two ways.
Two ways? I thought you had three.
There was, but we're not 250,000 yet.
Oh, okay.
So, do we just vote?
Ryan.
So, the same thing happened to us with our ballot measure last year, and we lost by seven votes. So, the committee that wanted that have rallied, and we have documentation, and we will do and we will do, go get our petitions filed, and we will be, uh, going door to door with, and getting our signatures.
I also think the fact, it does open up, hopefully, more discussion. What I have not seen here tonight is a whole lot of discussion, uh, between...
It's hard.
Yeah, discussions are...
And I get that, whatever, however, however, we do owe our community those discussions, whether you sit on this council up here or you sit on a school board over there. You owe your community the discussions to see what's best for our, our town, our kids, wherever that happens, responsibility happens to go.
If this gets voted, no. Can it be brought back? So if Kevin brings in 25 parents next time?
Yes.
There's a, we can put it back on our agenda.
Yes, you are, you are not precluded from considering this next month or at any point in the future.
Or one way or the other.
I was taking that chisel out of the stone.
Okay.
Ms. Mayor, I'm, uh, move that we approve the, uh, uh, well, approve the request, uh, the, uh, public hearing of the County Committee on the School District Organization for Research and Consideration of Reorganization.
Is anybody going to second it? I'm not.
You'll learn. No, I understand.
Don't give me that.
No, I'm not, so...
You're hoping. Okay.
You're hoping, Kevin and Bob.
Dies. Get, get the parents.
Item C.
I think it can, I think it can, you guys, I think it can.
Well, I kind of feel like if the parents don't come, then they're overstepped.
You're, you're right.
Mm-hmm.
You're right.
Okay.
I'm, I'm just mothering.
Just as a side note, her grandfather was in Chappelle. He was a central, and now he lives here, Porterfield, I bet you anything, Chuck Porterfield, he was a hard member in Doris, his uncle.
So moving on to item C. Stacy, it's all yours, Kim and I have to leave.
Yes, ma'am, they are recusing themselves because they're a member of the Board of the Rec- Weed Recreation, so...
Okay, let's just approve it.
Before us is the resolution number 202021, and let me read it correctly. So, do we have a report from our...
Yeah, I can give you a real quick report. This is just our annual contract between the City of Weed and the Weed Recreation and Parks District. Um, these funds are quarter penny sales tax that were passed in 2014. Um, we, we agree to provide services, uh, not to exceed 20,000, and additionally, we provide the senior transportation for the 2021, '22 fiscal year not to exceed 24,000 to pay for the senior van, so that's all this is, this, this is our annual contract.
And from our budget, uh, chair, is there any financial information that we need to know or share?
It's our normal contract.
Yeah, it comes, it's dedicated from the quarter penny, yeah.
Any questions other from staff?
This was just for the bus and...
The, uh, program services.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions or information? Is there a motion to be presented?
I make a motion to...
Mayor, pretend, uh, is there public comment?
We asked, oh, sorry.
Any public comment?
I saw everybody leaving except for three people.
That was a good assumption.
That's still, any public comment? Okay, foreseeing there's none, is there a motion that can be presented?
I make a motion that we accept the con, uh, renew the contract to Weed Park and Rec District.
I second.
It's been properly moved and seconded, any oppose? There's none, then the motion is passed.
Thank you.
We can get our members. Wow, thank you, Ms. Grant Rider, you're still here.
Well, I was going to say, I mean, I just, I need to meet a person, I think, so...
That was quick.
The Giants game is zero to zero.
Okay, that takes one day off my life.
Sorry, we couldn't do it.
The Giants game is zero to zero.
Don't do that!
It's tight! It's a tight game, Bob!
You, you kicked us out!
Ms. Mayor, if you let me present items, it'd go that quick.
So...
I know!
So this has really nothing to do with anything we've talked about, but is your grandfather, Mr. Cle, Mr. Ken Cleland? So her grandfather was our high school principal.
Yes, yes.
I'm right across the street.
And then the lady Porterfield, I bet you anything that Chet, who's a school board member in Doris, is her uncle.
I, I don't know exactly how they're related, but she's a former...
I'm like, they're connected, they're here for something else, but they're connected to the school.
Your Mr. Cleland's granddaughter?
We have to know those things.
We are sowing Weed.
He was the best principal ever, thank you.
We're still, we're still on the record.
Justin, do you have anything to say about, not about her relatives?
Uh, just want to give you an update, we're hopefully going to be proceeding with the new radio console next week, finally.
Next week!
Hopefully.
We have a ribbon, Kevin.
It's been postponed a few times. Um, new vehicles should be here by the beginning of November, hopefully we get some chips for the cars.
How many do we get?
Two.
Are they, are they the cruisers, the Dodge ones?
No, they'll be the Explorers.
Oh, I want Dodge ones.
But they've been delayed because of the chip shortage.
That's right.
And, uh, we are in, right in line with where we need to be for the required, uh, stop data reporting that's going to begin at January 1.
Explain that again, please.
Uh, so in 2015, uh, the Racial and Identity Profiling Act of 2015 was passed. As a small agency, we weren't required to start reporting that data until January of 2022. Um, our RIM system, that I've touted many, many times, has already been created, the, we just clicked the button today and it opened up the stop data. We are doing the practice submissions that we'll be submitting to DOJ to make sure we're in compliance. Hopefully, we, uh, don't have any bumps there, which I don't expect, and January 1, we should be able to go right into that required data. It'll require an officer for every detention or arrest to complete a, uh, six-page report that gets submitted anonymously, all data, including the officer and the people that were detained. It's all based on, uh, it's more, more collection of what the officer's perception was for race and gender, and that goes to a, a state board that, uh, makes recommendations for future legislation.
So we are collecting information, does it go to Department of Justice?
It's a board that works with Department of Justice, makes recommendations for future actions, but, uh, they, they collect the data. It'll be interesting once everybody's up and running, because mainly right now, obviously, if you have a large agency like LA or San Francisco, Oakland, much different data than what you're going to get from Weed or in Mount Shasta and the smaller agencies. So once they're all together, we'll have a better pers, better picture of what's going on in the state.
But you're currently capturing information right now, you're saying, you are capturing it now?
Well, we've always captured that.
Okay.
We will be reporting that now.
Okay.
We're on a, on a legislated form, it's approximately six pages, um, give or take, that, that gets submitted. All that data gets entered and submitted.
Politics, wow. Interesting to see what comes out, based on the national...
It's just for the state, just for the state.
It's just the state of California.
I'm interested to see what we say.
Is that all you have? Sandy thinks you have more to say. Nope, Sandy will say it, okay, Craig?
It's not, not my staff, I have their report.
It's not your turn yet.
Start thinking.
Uh, just an update on Vista Drive, we are still looking like we're going to get finished this year, um, if the weather holds.
This calendar year?
Yes.
You said November.
This fiscal year.
November?
Yes, we're still on schedule, we're, we're still, we're working on it.
It's confusing, but it's nice confusing.
Yeah, yeah, this is actually going to affect the businesses more at this traffic closure than, than we have in the past. I have received it.
Again, I asked the question last time, is there one, going to be one light right in the middle of where Taco Bell and right there, or is it going to be a flashing light? I told you it was, I told you it was four lights, I was told, but is it going to be one light for the four-lane intersection?
No, it'll, it'll be like right up here at the intersection.
Just one light, yeah, I was told different by someone else.
Yeah, no, no, it'll, it'll be standard, um, traffic signals.
Don't believe anybody but Craig.
Okay.
The bases are already there, we're just waiting for the polls. And on another thing, we have ordered water meters.
Oh, they're ordered?
Electronic?
They, the people, and from the other cities last night, were kind of jealous.
Yes.
And I got a lot of, uh, questions last month about how expensive everybody's water bills were. And I said, oh, well, I don't know, mine just is automatic, so I don't know what it was. And I went back and looked, and, ooh, it was like doubled. But then I got this month, and I was like, right down.
We did an estimated read in, um, July, which means we went back to your previous July reading a year before and used that as the basis for billing you. And then in August, when we were able to read the meters, it did an adjustment that caught you up. So your August bill seemed higher, your September one would seem more normal. Uh, you'll see your bills go down again in, um, October because we're now stopped watering.
Yep.
And when we get the AMR system in, it'll be actual, so that's what's going to be nice, no more estimating.
Well, and, you know, comparing to last year, we weren't in a drought last year, so we were watering, 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 and...
Yeah, and in July, you know, we had a bunch of 100-degree days all around in July and August, and people watered more than they thought. Oh, sorry.
Craig, Justin, do you have something else to say?
I do, I think I know what Sandy wanted me to, so, uh...
She was meant to let you hear.
Yes, um, so while I was working on the RIPA data today, in a webinar, Rotary donated $5,000 to the K9 Drax Fund, which we will use to equip the new Explorer once it arrives, um, as that's a very expensive process, so we would like to thank, uh, Weed Rotary.
Mount Shasta has chargers.
What's that?
Mount Shasta's chargers.
We have a charger too, they don't work that well in the snow.
Yeah.
Do you already have one?
No, we have one already.
Oh, yes.
Uh, we just, we saved that one, um, but we, we need something that's going to go through the snow and be effective in the winter.
And, and I don't think the dog's going to do that well in the backseat of a charger.
I'm worried about the dog.
I'm worried about the dog. Um, Emily, Craig, were you finished?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Emily.
Craig stole my thunder.
Okay.
I was really excited about the...
Steve? Did, were you threatened by the rest of the people that if you said anything, you'd be in trouble because it's so late?
Oh, my God, I'm going to get attacked.
Um, Ryan?
Nothing to add.
Nope, you've talked enough.
I've talked enough.
Sandy?
Yes, I, uh, just wanted to say thank you, Justin, that's exactly what I wanted you to, to hit on. Um, I worked tirelessly, and I was trying to get more funds for him, but unfortunately, there are certain members that shot that down.
You can give them a...
Um, also, when your water bills come in and they are accurate and they are not fluctuating, send a thank you card to Rod Mears, because he worked tirelessly on that grant for the city for us.
Oh.
Um, so he has been working, Rod Mears at Great Northern. So he has worked tirelessly on that grant to get that done, so we appreciate all of his hard work. He's working on other grants for us for the stormwater drainage and, and other things, so, well, we appreciate his hard work.
Good. Tim, what do you got?
And actually, when we get our money collected back on the CDPE loans, uh, that gives us more money to buy our AMRs too, so, which is nice. We've had a couple of those, just kind of get them in. I don't have a whole lot to, um, add tonight, other than I'm glad September's over. That was a, not a good month, um, for me personally, but I will tell you, um, I appreciate everybody in this room for their support and, um, well wishes during, uh, a not-so-great time of when my, uh, father, uh, fell ill and passed away. Um, so, but anyway, much appreciated among all of you, uh, for your understanding and support. And, uh, just to let everybody know, we're going to have a memorial for him in, um, November. So November the 13th, we'll be, uh, flying back to Arkansas and laying him to rest, so get, get that done, so. But thank all of you.
You're welcome.
You're welcome.
Uh, I don't have an agenda anymore.
Ms. Mayor, I got a question for Ryan, if the, and the council, if, if you're, and I, I appreciate you, uh, the, regarding the, your position regarding the unif, reun, the unification. But if the parents want, if good parents get together and they come, are we going to put that on the agenda? Or how, how would that come, would they come during the, uh, public comment?
So, they can come during public comment and ask you to put something on the agenda. Whether you do so will ultimately be the council's discretion or the mayor's discretion. Um, so their opportunity to, to seek that from you would be either coming during public comment or sending in emails, letters, et cetera. But they don't have any direct authority to put something on the agenda.
Do we? I, can I?
Yeah, we can, we can put it back on there.
Yes, you could put it back on there.
If there was a group of people that came, got together and I went to Ms. Mayor and asked her to, to put it on the agenda, that would be the process?
Yeah, yeah.
And...
That's what I was asking him, if we could get 25 people in this room that say, we want this.
I got you.
And, and I will add that during the non-agenda public comment, the language in the agenda says that the three members of the council must agree to add a matter to a future agenda. So if, if they come and talk about reunification, or reunification, uh, whatever words I'm trying to say, uh, that three of you could agree to put it on the agenda for a future meeting, um, or, or do that, um, through the normal process of adding things to the agenda.
Reunification is, that's...
No, actually, it's for the study, it's really, the, the point is it's for a study. Yeah. Um, who's adjourning? That's all.
I, I so moved.
No.
Bob?
Poor Bob.
I, I second, I second.
Three words, three words.
It's been moved and seconded to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I so moved, remember that?
You so moved, oh, yeah.